Okay, welcome. Today is Monday, November 25th. It's noon. This is a meeting of the Akushna Board of Selectmen. All rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've got a really single-issue agenda today. We're going to be meeting with three candidates, three finalist candidates for our Town Administrator position. We had one interview last Friday with one candidate. We're meeting with three people today. Joining us at the table is Kevin Pagos, who in the past had served as interim Town Administrator for the Town of Akushna and is helping us with our search, as you both know, for the community, is helping us with our search for our next Town Administrator. So, Mr. Pagos has been very helpful to the community and is also supporting our interim Town Administrator while she's serving in that role. Our first appointment today is with Mr. John Healy, is a candidate for the Town Administrator position in the town. Welcome, Mr. Healy.
Thank you very much.
So, just sort of the, we've allocated an hour for each candidate. And process that we did for the first interview was allow you to, you know, to make some introductory comments, I mean, whatever, wherever you want to go with it, why you should be our next Town Administrator. Then we opened it up for questions from the Board of Selectmen. We tried to limit it for us to 15 minutes each, you know, with open response on your part. And then there was some time, last time, to do some closing comments in that part as well, so just so you understand what your schedule's going to look like. But, yeah, that clock's a little, that's about right, I guess, so.
Let me account for the podium.
And you can use, and behind the podium, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love, I love being behind a podium myself, so. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for today?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
Seconds. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Back to, so why don't, why don't we start, Mr. Healy? Whenever you're ready. So, you know, open comments, 10 to 15 minutes, or five, however long it takes, and I'll watch the clock while you give your signal.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Again, my name is John Healy. They call me Jack. Usually they call me other things, but I prefer Jack. And as, as you know, from reading my resume, I've been in this business most of my life, adult life. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology and a master's degree in community organization and development from Springfield College. And I've, I have over 47 years' experience in the business. After 22 years as the Town Manager in Middleborough, back in 2007, I had maxed out my years of service and, as far as the retirement system is concerned. And so I retired. I put that in quotes because I never intended to retire-retire, but I did want to collect my pension. My wife and I met in motorhome the next morning at 5:00 a.m., and we went on a cross-country trip and didn't come back for six months. It was a wonderful time, but immediately on returning, I looked around to see what was available and found that the Town of Southbridge was looking for someone to fill in for a Town Administrator who was, who'd been terminated by the board. And so I interviewed and was hired for that job. Southbridge had a landfill, and it was a very contentious subject matter in town. But they were looking, at the time that I came into town in January, they were looking at a new budget, looking at the next year's budget. And we're facing a $4 million deficit. And we, they were looking at laying off 28 people on general government side and on the school side. It was not a pretty picture. I read the contract with Casella Waste Management to operate the landfill and found that the town had put up a $7 million host community agreement, a bond, in cash, a cash bond of $7 million. I immediately recognized that they didn't have a shortfall of $7 million. They had a surplus, I'm sorry, their shortfall was $2 million. They didn't have a shortfall in their budget. They had a surplus of funds and no shortfall. The result was that nobody got laid off, and, and they were able to put $5 million in reserve fund. So that was a very happy circumstance. It was a good introduction, and I really enjoyed the short time I was there and helped them to get a new permanent Town Administrator. My next assignment was next door in Treetown, and I signed a three-year contract with them. Following that three-year contract, I went to Westport for three years and got invited back to Westport, to Treetown, for another three years. You have my resume, and you all have a chance to review it so you know some of the things I was able to do for those communities in the short time that I worked for them. I've, I've applied for this job and would like to get a consent hiring me for a three-year term. And at the end of that three years, would take another look and see what, how we all I assume you've all read and absorbed what's in my application, so I won't take your time to go over it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I thank you for considering me as your candidate.
Excellent. Okay, so it's to me, I guess. Thank you.
Yep.
So, we're each going to ask, I think, I believe, you might have three, so.
Three, four, whatever.
Yeah, but we're trying to, trying to limit to 15 minutes per, so it's, so, just looking at the clock. So, just talk about the.
15 minutes per select.
Per select, yeah, per select. So, we're trying to, you know, question and answer within that timeframe. So, talk about the budgeting process and your experience in the budgeting process and how you approach that and, you know, what that looks like from your perspective, how you work with the department heads, how you work with Board of Selectmen, drafts back and forth, just how do you, how do you manage that process, which is a very important part of, of your job.
Initially, I worked as a team with the treasurer, the treasurer collector, and the accountant, and take a look at what, what it looks like in terms of revenue and expenditures and proposed expenditures. And then we draft up some kind of a letter to all the department heads, drawing a little circle around what kind of funds are available and, and how we're going to treat the budgets, whether they have to submit a level-funded budget or whether there's room for considering additional spending. Once, once this, once the budgets are submitted, I review them, and we all review them initially by ourselves, and then we get together as a group to see what the opportunities are in terms of being able to meet the needs of the different departments. I spent some time with the finance officers, interviewing, sitting with the selectmen and explaining to them what the facts, the financial facts of life are, so that you know going in what we're going to be facing. And then we go at it, and we try to come up with a balanced budget and try to stay away from some of the rainy day funds if we can. That's often very difficult to do. But the, the object is to meet the needs of the town with the least possible addition to the budget and staying away, staying away from the savings account, if you will, those accounts in the town.
What do you, just sort of related question, free cash balancing, what's free cash, the role of free cash in balancing the budget?
Yeah.
I know some think it's fine and some think it's, we shouldn't touch a penny of it.
Yeah, well, I, I like to stay away from it. It's not free and it's not cash. It's, you know, so, it's a good idea to try and leave alone, but depending on what the numbers are, you know, you might want to tap it a little bit.
Okay. Second question, also sort of budget-related, finance-related, money management-related. I'm not going to, you know, we're, we're one town that, from a government perspective, is in some ways divided in half. You've got the department that reports to the Board of Selectmen and that, and the school department, which reports to the school committee and has their own business office and leadership structure and elected, has elected leadership in the school committee. And I've sort of seen both sides of the relationship between the two sides of town. One where there was a lot of animosity, where it was, you know, every penny they got was money they stole from us. And, you know, the, the side where it was more cooperative, where we all acknowledged there was a pool of money and we could, we all had to manage within the available resources we had, and we all had to manage to available, available growth in our budgets. So, just talk about your past relationships, I guess, with, with school departments and how you've facilitated their involvement in the budget process and worked cooperatively.
I've always, fortunately, been blessed to have, to work with school superintendents who knew what the realities of life were, and I didn't have to explain to them that we had, this was a joint effort to stay within the budget and meet as many of the needs of the town and the school as we possibly could. I don't remember a single time when I had to preside over any kind of a fight over money between the towns that I worked for and the school. As I said, I think I was blessed in that regard, but the first, the first superintendent of schools in Middleborough, where I served as Town Manager for 22 years, was Dr. Sullivan. He was a huge man, six foot six, and, and he had an office in the Town Hall, right across the hall from mine. His desk was under a stairwell. He was, he was very willing to do, to live a minimalist life as the school superintendent. I'm telling you this story about his office for that reason. He could barely squeeze under the stairwell he's in, his desk, and would not move out of Town Hall. He was not even going to think about moving into one of the schools. He wanted to stay right where he was and not use up valuable space in the school facilities. So, he and I got along well, and he, his tenure was very similar to mine. I think I, I was there eight years after he finally did retire. But I have always been able to work with the school side, both the superintendents and the school boards. I've never been able to find, not to, never been able not to find a middle ground where we could agree to what the division of the pie was going to be. So, I think that's, I think that's due to my ability to agree to disagree agreeably and to work cooperatively to a endpoint where we made the division of the funds a task that we both worked at without, without rank, without trying to outdoce one another and trying to work to accommodate as many of both school and town needs as we could.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gasper.
You're done. All right. What sources of revenue would you use to balance budgets?
Well, all of them. The departmental revenues, the, all of the line items in the budget. Is there something I'm missing in the question?
What if I said, what sources of revenues would you use to balance budgets year over year? Additional revenues?
Oh, additional revenues. If other revenues became available during the course of the year? Is that?
Such as the tax levy?
Yeah.
There's, so according to the DOR, there's, there's certain revenues outside of what we're already balancing the budget on.
Yeah.
You know, which is school age, after 70, and everything else. The DOR says that there's certain revenues that you should only apply towards balancing your budgets for the next year outside of what you did the previous year. That's what I'm looking for.
For the following year?
Yeah.
For the following year? I'm, I'm sorry, I.
No.
I, no.
Okay. What, what experience do you have negotiating with unions in the municipal sector?
Many, many years.
Some examples, maybe?
Yeah.
Just some examples of.
Maybe what were some of the outcomes when, in your past experience negotiating with unions in the municipal sector? Some of your past experiences that you've had as far as percentage-wise, have you, have you always kept it to a limit or have you been in negotiations where there's, you know, exorbitant amounts of percentages?
No, we've always had a target limit. We've always set a target limit.
Have you achieved those limits in the past?
Yes, sir.
Do you believe that the current public pension system is sustainable? If so, why? If not, what reform would you suggest to make it sustainable?
The answer is no, and I don't know.
Good, very good. At year-end, departments are able to transfer money from one line item to another. In the past, those transfers would be voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee before the expenditure could be made. In the last few years, that process has diminished. What is your opinion regarding this issue?
I, I think it's a good idea to involve the Finance Committee and the Selectmen. At least, it shouldn't come as a surprise at the end of the day to either of those boards. I'm not, I'm not one to showboat or get out in front of the boards that I work with.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is going a lot faster than what we expected?
Okay, that's all right.
I will yield my time, as I said before.
Yield my time. Mr. DeRouche.
Mr. DeRouche, thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Yes.
In line with pension liabilities, I'd like to just talk about OPEC liabilities.
Yeah.
Which are perhaps the greatest single underreported, underscrutized and underfunded liability within our state and our town, and I'm sure the surrounding towns are no different.
Yeah.
Akushna's OPEC liability is in the vicinity of $14 million, and we have $300,000 in the trust fund.
Right.
Could you please tell us how you've handled this issue in previous towns and if you would do the same in Akushna?
I'd have to take a look at your specific situation before I comment on what I'd recommend you do, but other post-employment benefits are always, you know, a worry because, because they have a tendency to increase year after year, and you've got no real way of dealing with that without putting something else off. But I'd, I'd have to take a look at your budget, what your existing situation was before I'd offer, and talk to the financial officers before I'd offer a suggestion as to how you might be able to deal with it.
Because right now, we're pay-as-we-go, which, I don't know if that's how it was in other towns that you've previously been involved with.
For the most part, yeah.
Very much. Did they look for any other types of revenues from outside? Did they, you know, how else do you raise revenues, I guess? Did they look at solar? Did they look at different things?
I, I really would have to take a look at the situation in order to respond.
Okay. In your cover letter, you tout that you're a team builder and an encourager.
Yes.
So, my question is how to create a team atmosphere with town employees?
By respect, by respecting them and their responsibility and their opinions. Working together as a team, this is a team-building exercise, you know? And helping, helping them to develop skills that they might be missing. Once again, one of my, one of my letters of recommendation is from Diane Pelman. She's now the Town Clerk in Swansea, and it's an elected position there. But she calls attention to the fact that I worked with her and other town department heads to identify what their skills were and what they weren't, and to help them grow in their position. And so, that's, that's the trick. You, you deal with what you got and you help them to be better at what they do. And that's never been difficult for me. I think it's, you either have that ability to relate to people or you don't.
And one more question. How do you balance the town's desire to employ the best and the brightest employees with the town's ability to pay them?
I can't say we've never lost an employee to, to another, another community or to private sector, but, you know, you, you work with them to see what you can do to make sure that their skill set that's working for you get lost because of something you could do that you didn't do. But it, it happens, it happens. But I don't let it happen for failure to do something to try to make it better. It's all.
Well, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the questions that we had. Does anybody else have anything else that they want to throw in at this point?
At the, I'm all set.
So, closing comments. Why, help convince us why we should hire you as our next Town Administrator in the Town of Akushna.
Yes. I guess I'd say that I, I have the ability and the desire to continue to do what I've done for years. And I understand that there's another candidate that's already on your staff and has been a finance officer most of her life. She's an attorney as well, I understand. I'd, I'd be more than happy if it was the board's wish, if you chose me as your next Town Administrator, to work with her. Perhaps you could use some of the pay that you're not going to pay me, which is another great feature of my candidacy, I think. I can only make around $55,000 a year because I haven't taken down a pension check. Everybody else is going to be, you know.
Higher.
Three times.
I think higher, higher than double, yeah.
Way higher.
So, you're proposing working full-time for that?
I'm proposing working full-time, yes. But perhaps some of the money you save could be used to pay a stipend to your financial officer who wants to become the Town Administrator with a view to it possibly, they're possibly taking over at the end of that three-year period. I'm not going to, I'm not going to be a cost to you from a health insurance or other benefits point of view, but I'm also going to leave you with some funds that you could either not spend and put away for a rainy day or use in some other fashion to the tune of about $100,000 a year. So, maybe that's an option, I don't know. I've not, I've not inquired about it, but, and with anybody officially, but I wanted to let you know that that's, that's one of the things you have available here to do should you make a decision to do that.
It's very difficult, Mr. Chairman. It's very difficult for us.
Yes, I understand.
To acknowledge back that comment, seeing how she is up for an interview, so.
I understand, you know. I just wanted to put it out there, something you might want to.
I don't know if you were looking for a response.
No, I'm not looking for a response.
Probably understand it's extremely difficult for us to make any comments to.
Thank you very much.
Potential candidate, so.
I understand.
But let me, let me follow that path, though. Who would have to approve that from, just assuming that happened? Who would have to approve your collecting $55,000 and working full-time? Is that?
Oh, no.
Does the Pension Board have to approve it, or you said?
I've already cleared it in a number of cases where I've worked before, so I know it's the, that's the situation. I've cleared it again with David Sullivan, who's the Plymouth County Retirement Board Executive.
Okay.
So, it's, it doesn't need to be cleared. It's a policy and a fact of life.
If it helps the board, a lot of Town Managers who retire and take their pension go back and work as interns and work as many, there's an hour limitation and a salary limitation. The hour limitation is easily exceeded just because when you hit the hours, you volunteer after that. The salary limitation, as Jack is suggesting, is commonly exceeded because once you hit the salary limitation, after that, you volunteer. So, the four months I worked for you as interim three years ago, I didn't receive any compensation. Your council had me sign an agreement that said I recognized I was not going to be compensated, but I would do the work as a set, a set by the board on a voluntary basis. And what Jack's describing, what I've. And what Jack's describing, what I've done, many of the town managers are doing now, because it gets you out of the house.
Be careful. Be careful.
In my case, it gets me out of the house. In Jack's case, he's actually doing it professionally again. So, and as other town managers, so there's no approval required. It's up to the individual manager. In terms of what the amount is that they can be paid, it's actually set by the community you work for, according to a formula. The town treasurer has to ask for the records from the pension, from the county pension, and then, and the records from the predecessor she already has, and it's a formula for how much it can be paid. So, she gets that, she certifies it to you, and then you incorporate that amount into the contract that you would presumably negotiate.
Yeah.
And then that's the number that can be paid. And then, that number can be X dollars for however many hours you and the individual one agree to. By definition, usually you agree to a real salary for some portion of the hours, and then after that, the person is doing it voluntarily, and it's actually signed, so that they are signed that they are doing it.
Right.
It's commonly done.
Yeah. I can share the three contracts I've had with Free Town in Westport and Free Town again, but...
Back to you on that. We're in the closing comments, so back to you on that, so...
Yes, thank you.
I know we hijacked you a little bit.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
With that, amounts to is a percentage of the current town administrator's salary in the town that I left, retired from, okay? Plus $15,000. In my case, that adds up right now to about $55,000.
Okay.
All right. So, I, is my turn for closing comments?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think very seriously, that my experience is hard to beat, and that what I'm able to do for you in terms of bringing you the opportunity to save $100,000 a year for three years, whatever it turns out to be, is something that I've done three times already. Retirement fund, six months on the road, and, as I said, I've loved every bit of the work I've done since retirement, and I'd like to get right back in it and do it again. I know that there's a lot of things that have gone undone. Some of them, one of them is cleaning up the other half of the Free Town screw site, which happens to be on your side of the line. I've worked successfully in all the communities I've worked with, between the town and the gown, and never had a problem with it. Don't anticipate I would now. Once again, I think it's what your management style is, what you, how you approach an issue or a problem, that determines whether you're going to be successful or not. It's what I do. I guess, bottom line, I'll leave you with that. I love what I do. Thank you.
Okay. Stanley, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
You want me to get out of here so you can...
Yeah, we're early, but sure, yeah. Well, take your time getting out of here. We're good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we, I'm sorry, I'll tell you, if Mr. Mullen is here, we'll take him now, but if not, I think we'll recess and...
Yeah, you're fine. I need a 10 minutes.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we motion for a 10-minute recess?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're on recess to return in 10 minutes, 12:45. It is still November 25th. This is our second interview for the town administrator position. I'd like to welcome Michael Mullen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
I'll just go through what the schedule is, so we're starting at quarter of one, so we've allocated an hour for each interview, but as you know already, we ran a little bit quick on the first one, and quick is good, so if you'd want to do it quick, that's fine. We're okay with that. So, don't feel an obligation to use the whole hour, but the hour is yours if you want it. So, basically, going to let you make a couple of introductory comments, go, you know, take 15 minutes if you want. Then, coming to the three selectmen, we each have questions to ask. I have, you know, it's two to five, I think, based on the selectmen, and then at the end, we'll go back to you for comments on why we should select you as a next town administrator. So, with that introduction, I'll start with you. Just a brief introduction of yourself and whatever you want to do. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, really for the opportunity to come before you as a finalist this afternoon. My name is Mike Mullen, and I'm really excited about the opportunity to work all for you and for the residents of Akushin as your next town administrator. Just a little bit about myself, as I outlined in my resume. Like, I've worked, I've really worked in state and local government for most of my career now. Like, I've worked at the state office for more than six years, in both the House and Senate. I served as Chief of Staff to the former Mayor of Brockton. I've been working for the last two and a half years as the Assistant County Director, and now the County Director for the County of Norfolk, like, and really managing and administering all of their operations as well. And really, for the past nine years, but there's been like a few breaks, I've been involved in my hometown of Rockland. Like, I served for six years on the school committee, and three years, the past three years, as a member of the Board of Selectmen. So, I understand all the choice and the responsibility and exactly what you're going through now, because about six months ago, I went through the same thing as a member of the board, and, you know, I mean, working to choose someone to lead your town forward is, it's really an important responsibility, and I get that, and I get, you know, the responsibility that each of you have had over the last few months, and making sure the process has worked in terms of really getting to today. So, as I've outlined, really, I've always had a passion for local government and public service. Like, I really love the nuts and bolts of it all. I enjoy working with the board to set priorities and working with residents to really achieve those priorities and goals. Like, I love achieving them through the operating budget, through grant initiatives and opportunities, through planning efforts and initiatives, and other opportunities. I just love the project management part of the job. I've built like a really good track record of success with that, and I really enjoy that all, because I really do believe in, it's how I've always operated, that you can really have the most impact serving people, and that's what it's all about, serving people at the local level. And so, I became interested in Akushin and in the position of town administrator when I did learn that a former town administrator had been hired in Eastbridge Water. Like, I really began learning at the town at that point, and trying to assess whether I'd be a good fit here. And, you know, there were some like communities based on the culture and the dynamics where people really don't fit, and then there were other cases where, you know, individuals are a really good fit. And so, over the past two months, really, I spent some time here. I've attended events, like, I've gone to a few events and meetings, and I really, like, I really got to appreciate all that Akushin is about. The community pride here, the leadership of your board has really impressed me, the, you know, but the fact that Akushin is, oh, you know, like a real working-class family community, you know, is really important to me. That's how I was brought up. That's the type of community that I work in and lead now. And, you know, like, all of that combined with another thing that truly struck me was the priority that your board and the town places on the history of the community and preserving that history, and a lot of the things like the, oh, you know, like the saw mills and the different parts of the community that you invest in and you take pride in, and all that. So, when you really combine all that with the leadership of the board, with the town's fiscal position, and really the interview that I had with the screening committee, I don't, I want to be hokey, but that interview was really fun, because I, like, I really got to understand from the people on the, oh, really from the individuals on the screening committee, who are all, oh, you know, community leaders here in town, exactly what the town was all about. Oh, you know, I think they were a really amazing cross-section of the town, like, and I had fun. A lot of times, interviews aren't fun, but, you know, that evening, it was really fun, hearing their thoughts about the town sharing, oh, you know, the skills and expertise that I think I can really bring, and, you know, that evening really sold me on the town. I really left there excited about the opportunity, and I'm excited about the opportunity today. As I mentioned, like, I spent some time here. I've learned about the town. I've learned about the really positive things and the projects that you've have done in the past few years and that you're going, like, and plan on doing forward, and I would just really love to become a part of its future, to work with you and for you, to help lead all those efforts forward. So, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
I was told you were here for the Veterans Day event.
Yes, I was. I attended that. I attended a school committee meeting last week, and, oh, actually, this past week, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a lot of controversy.
That was a busy meeting.
Yes, it was a busy meeting.
And then, actually, last weekend, like, actually, my family, my wife and two kids, I have two two-and-a-half-year twins, like, and we came down for the Akushin PTO craft fair, like, at the middle school, and that was really fun. It was gym-packed, and I really got to get a sense of the community there as well.
Okay. So, again, questions? We're each going to ask you a few questions. We're asking the same questions to each candidate, so we're sort of on script, but... So, I want to talk about budgeting. Budgeting's a big part of the town administrator's job, and give us an understanding of how many budgets you've been involved in developing in the past, and what you think that process would look like in the town of Akushin, and how you would manage that process, working with the department heads and the Board of Selectmen.
I'd like to official, like, in those roles, I've been part, I've been involved in the budget process, you know, in each of the six years that I was a member of the school committee, and also, each of the three years and last year, especially based on the dynamics that we had happening in town during the past year, I was in, really involved in those efforts. But really, I've been, my experience in Brockton in the last, actually, two and a half years, like, in Norfolk County, that I've been, oh, you know, with a person like responsible for the budget, you know, writing the budget, projecting revenues, oh, you know, really making sure, oh, you know, all the revenues, any projections there really work out to what the expenditures in reality are going to be. Like, in that process, usually, oh, you know, in the, oh, in the roles that I've had now, that process really begins right now. Oh, you know, I can really, oh, you know, meeting with department heads, assessing their needs and where they think they want to go as a department, and then really bringing the towns or the entities, oh, financing team together to look, oh, where the revenues might be trending as well, so you can actually, I will begin looking at those. Oh, and then really having that process evolve over the foreseeable months. You know, one of the things, I mean, everyone in the first part of January, you know, like, really focused on Chapter 70 and local aid, and I think in the years to come, especially the conversation and the work being done on Chapter 70 and that formula right now, you know, I think that focus is going to become even more important, because hopefully, you know, the bill that just actually was signed into law does, oh, you know, has some good investments attached to it, and, you know, and don't have any unintended consequences in terms of, oh, like, really increased funding for local communities as well. But it's really working to piece all that together, you know, and working with the finance committee, and that, oh, in that process, and working with them in that process to really, every year and every organization and entity, you know, there's a lot of paring down in priority setting that has to happen, just based on, oh, the real actual needs compared to what the revenues are. And I have a track record of really doing that, oh, like, in building a consensus with people, like, you know, with town departments and, oh, like, elected and appointed officials to really, oh, you know, to find consensus and to determine, oh, really, in a way, especially with the school departments, like, in a way that is all done together and that works for everyone as a town. Oh, you know, going into the final vote, like, in the county's case, it's the advisory board meeting, like, and in all of the town cases, all of the efforts are heading up to town meeting as well. But, oh, you know, I've built a track record of being able to do that. One of the things, especially at the, like, in the county, during the last two and a half years, the county funding is largely based on revenues that come in from the registry of deeds, based on the recording fees and the deeds exercise tax. Like, and generally speaking, in Norfolk County, those revenues have fallen, actually, by about $800,000 in the past three years. Also, like, we've had to make some, oh, you know, difficult cuts, you know, like, and painful choices, just to be able to balance, and really be able to maintain all the services that we have. And those conversations haven't been fun, but I've been able to have them, like, I've been able to have them effectively, and in some cases, again, going back to the county, the structural, there exists a structural, there exists a structural funding issue, like, in my opinion, with county governments, based on the fact that there's a 1981 formula, and then, as I mentioned, like, about 40% of our revenues are just, oh, based on registry of deeds expenses or the fees. And when those fees decrease significantly, obviously, oh, you don't have revenues available, like, and it's really, I mean, there's not a whole lot of people that understand why and how that happens, and it's really the expectation setting. It's working to highlight these issues with, like, our county commissioners, with our advisory board, like, and really breaking that all down and to highlight that for them. So, it's all like a little bit of education, it's highlighting those issues, and again, really building consensus along the way, and I've been able to do that. We have, oh, in the county, a $31 million operating budget, which is very similar to the town of Akushin's. Also, I really think being able to work with the finance team here, to be able to continue doing that, to make all the investments that I know are important to the board, and working with the board to do that, like, I really believe I have all the abilities, and I'd be really strong in that aspect.
Thank you. Question two. In a community like Akushin, in most communities, you've got two sides of government. You've got the school department, which is managed by a superintendent and an elected school committee, and what we call the town side, which is managed by the Board of Selectmen. Over the years, there have been two ways of, you know, that's been cooperative and confrontational, and it's been both, and I prefer cooperative, but I've seen the confrontational as well. We're all fighting for the same dollar.
Exactly.
And I guess, just comment as to how you would work as a representative of the Board of Selectmen, how you would work with the school department and the superintendent and the school department business manager and the school committee to foster a cooperative environment and create an understanding that we're a team.
Yes, no, and I understand it completely. Like, and frankly, like, in all the environments that I've been in, each of the three I described, really, like, and even with the city of Brockton, you know, I've always approached other conversation as exactly that. We're a team, and we're one community, and that's how it should operate, because, oh, I mean, the reality is that we are. And I, oh, one of the things that really frustrates me is when, oh, you know, there's a dynamic that exists where there are two entities that are really perceived as separate. And I've been, oh, you know, part of environments where that relationship is really healthy, and I've been part of environments where that relationship has been awful, oh, like, and really, like, I have made it a focus to, like, actually, you reset the relationship, and, oh, I can really move it into a productive one going forward. Oh, so that... Uh, oh, so that being said, uh, I believe that the relationship with the, uh, school department, it's really about communication, uh, uh, and it's about expectation setting. Um, I think as long, oh, you know, obviously, there are limited revenues that go around and that's inherent. Uh, but I think in terms of expectation setting, uh, in communicating and, oh, you know, in those conversations, like, communicating from the superintendent what the needs actually are, oh, you know, on an ongoing, regular basis, I think is imperative. Um, I, um, I think one of the things, oh, for example, that, uh, oh, really speaks to the priority and the relationship that you have with the schools here, uh, is, uh, the example that the board and the school department just, uh, established two years ago with the special education stabilization fund. Oh, you know, there's a town understanding, uh, oh, from everything that I've read and, oh, and there appears to be that there are some expenses in the school department, like special ed services, uh, that are unpredictable. I mean, the fact that the town understood that and made a good faith effort, uh, oh, you know, to not only create that fund, but to fund the fund, uh, like, I think, uh, really speaks to the relationship and the importance, uh, like, of the partnership and the, uh, collaboration that you want with, uh, the school department. And, uh, uh, last year in Rockton, for example, I, oh, there was like a crazy school payroll issue where every time the school department, uh, sent over their payroll to the town accountant's office, uh, the whole thing would blow up. I mean, it literally blow up. And, and the chairman of the school, committee myself, would, oh, be on the phones, really trying to do the work of, you know, the department heads who we were paying to do the work. And, oh, all, so I understand all that, oh, you know, but again, um, it's really working to communicate, uh, like, it's, uh, to have this ongoing understanding from, uh, the school department and the town side, uh, what the needs actually are, um, and its expectation, uh, setting along the way, uh, to make sure everyone is rowing, uh, in the same boat and going in the same direction as a community.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
No problem, thank you.
Mr. Gasper.
Thank you, Mr. Jemmet. What experience do you have negotiating with unions in the municipal sector?
Oh, I've, um, I've done that for most of my career now. I've, uh, like, I did that, um, I've done that as a member of the school committee. I've done that as a selectman. Uh, not only have I, uh, negotiated with unions, I've, uh, also negotiated with non-union personnel and department heads, uh, the school superintendent, the town administrator, um, uh, like, and county employees as well, but specific to collective bargaining, uh, uh, going back to when I was twenty-two, uh, like, I was actually on, uh, the bargaining, uh, team to negotiate with our teachers, our teacher aides, um, our school secretaries and our custodians. Oh, you know, so I learned early on, um, um, exactly what the process really was, oh, you know, uh, the importance of the process, uh, all the laws and how you have to respect that process, or if you don't, oh, you know, the liabilities that, oh, really come along with that, uh, you know, and I've always, like, understood that the process is important to employees and to communities. Uh, I can fast-forward, um, uh, like, into, uh, the past few years as, uh, like, uh, as a selectman, as a county administrator, oh, that's exactly what I do for the county. I'm the chief negotiator. Uh, like, and I'm actually in the process, uh, like, of bargaining now with our three units. Uh, and frankly, uh, without giving away, uh, oh, you know, running afoul of our ground rules, oh, you know, we're trying to make real, uh, reforms in those processes, dealing with, oh, you know, a sick time buyback, dealing, uh, with overtime policies to really, um, uh, like, address issues, oh, with overtime policies. Um, and also, well, really try to, oh, you know, make the county government more sustainable through our contracts as well. Uh, you know, but so I understand how to, oh, oh, really approach those processes from just, you know, a cost of living, um, uh, exercise and really, like, costing all those, oh, you know, contracts out and, uh, how much, for example, education incentive, how much, oh, those, what the true costs of those things are. Oh, but also using the process to make our needed reforms and adjustments in terms of, you know, a sick time buyback and overtime policies and those things, um, as an example. And I've, uh, and I believe I've been effective at it because, again, uh, it goes back to, oh, you know, a building trust, building respect between, um, and across the table, uh, and building consensus to achieve those goals and, oh, and that's what I've always done and that's what I've been effective at. Thank you.
Do you believe that the current public pension system is sustainable? If so, why? If not, what reform would you suggest to make it sustainable?
Um, generally speaking, uh, uh, like, I believe it's fairly sustainable. Oh, by and large, you do, um, have employees contributing, excuse me, contributing to self-funding their own pensions. Oh, one of the things that really inhibit that on a regular basis, however, um, is when, uh, in order, uh, to balance budgets, there are some, uh, the reality is when all the state officials get involved and they have a track record of sometimes, oh, kicking the liability can down the road. Oh, you know, but that's when it becomes really problematic. And, uh, you know, if they could, uh, really stick to a funding date, uh, uh, in my opinion, that would be helpful. Uh, you know, I'm, oh, and I believe in the past few years, there hasn't been any changes unless, uh, I've been wrong, but I do know going, uh, through the tougher years in the, uh, like, in the two thousand ten, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, um, in order just to balance our operating budgets, uh, the state, um, at that time, when I did allow the can to be kicked down the road and that, um, has inhibited, um, oh, a lot of things with, um, about timelines. But generally speaking, oh, you know, uh, from the employee point of view, I, oh, based on the current formula, I mean, you do have employees, oh, you know, really self-funding their own pensions, uh, like, are there issues which, oh, really, oh, you know, are proper forms, yes. Um, and I think, you know, uh, like, a look at the forms are always needed. Uh, that's just a healthy part of the process, but generally speaking, I think, uh, it is a relatively fair system.
Thank you. At year-end, department heads are able to transfer money from one line item to another. In the past, those transfers would be voted on by the board of selectmen and the finance committee before the expenditure could be made. In the last few years, that process has diminished. What is your opinion regarding this issue?
So, you had to transfer the, uh, that would make conceivably after town meeting, correct?
So, at the year-end?
Yep.
Departments have the ability in the last sixty days of the calendar year, where they have a budget and all line items in their budget, in the last sixty days, move those funds around from within one line item to the other. And now, the law has changed to even include salaries.
Okay.
Okay? So, at the end of the year, in those last sixty days, departments, if they have expended money in certain, in certain budget line items, they have the flexibility to spend that money and intermingle those budget line items. What is your opinion on that process? Do you believe that that should be expenditures maybe over a certain dollar amount? Be always voted on by the board of selectmen in the finance committee before the expenditure's being made? Or would you just let a department spend, let's say, ten, fifteen thousand dollars on anything that they wanted to just because it's in their budget?
Oh, understood completely.
You understand that?
Yes, no, exactly. Um, I mean, frankly, there's, oh, just in my mind, a bunch of pieces to that. Oh, frankly, uh, uh, the board of selectmen, uh, like, and the town administrator really should be aware of that. Uh, and frankly, oh, you know, oh, I mean, I think it's, oh, really, the board's put, uh, like, it is, uh, the board as a whole, your prerogative whether you want to establish a policy, uh, like, or a bylaw in terms of how to, oh, really deal with that and spell that out. Uh, and I think that's, oh, if it's important to the board, oh, you know, obviously, that would just be the rule and that'll be the policy that all, all our department heads, that's the expectation, uh, uh, that everyone has to follow. Um, in terms of, I mean, I understand, oh, you know, the flexibility, um, oh, oh, you know, for departments, oh, that is, oh, like, a lot of times, uh, really needed for them to meet year-end and, oh, you know, oh, if they have one account, uh, that just because of the nature, oh, whether it's an overtime account or whatever account, oh, you know, there might be a good reason why, uh, oh, they have to make a transfer to have that zeroed out at the end of the year. And I think, like, a conversation, an ongoing conversation with the board of selectmen, uh, again, the finance committee and the town administrator is really, uh, helpful and necessary. Oh, what is really problematic, in my opinion, if it's happening, uh, is just having a department heads moving around money to spend money. Oh, you know, I think, oh, you know, that would really need to be addressed because, uh, at the end of the day, especially going, uh, like, uh, into understanding and projecting, oh, what your free cash numbers are, first of all, oh, that all has, like, an impact. I mean, if there's an opportunity, oh, you know, but to have, like, a real, true free cash number, oh, as a town, you want to realize that. You don't want, oh, you know, our money just spent because it's there or transferred because it's there. Um, on the other hand, also, looking into budgeting, uh, for the following fiscal year, I mean, the, um, uh, in my opinion, one of the number one things you want to be doing when, oh, you know, like, you're compiling the budget, is understanding what your real true cost at. Uh, and if you're dealing, oh, with unofficial numbers, oh, you know, that historically haven't moved around, I mean, that's, oh, again, you know, you want some flexibility to be able to address issues, uh, but on the flip side, you need to be able to know, oh, what the real true numbers are, oh, you know, you're really working with to operate with. But, again, to my first point, um, if that's an issue, I would, oh, really recommend to the board, if you want to look at it some more, uh, to come, uh, up with a policy or bylaw in terms of how to manage, uh, that whole situation, which, oh, what situations may be allowed and what situations, um, they want, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, appreciate it.
No problem.
No further questions?
Mr. Deroch.
Another liability that this town faces is our OPEB situation.
Understood.
Um, and I'm sure that's no different in the surrounding communities in the state.
Yep, exactly.
Um, Acushnet's OPEB liability is in the vicinity of fourteen million.
Yep.
And we have about three hundred thousand dollars in our trust fund. Could you tell us how you've handled, or if you've had to handle this situation in previous towns, and, uh, give us, generally speaking, how would you address this problem?
Um, oh, and first of all, yes, you're exactly right, sir, that, oh, you know, the OPEB liabilities, oh, you know, oh, and the impact that it's having on every community, oh, on the Commonwealth or anyone really who, oh, has to deal with Gatsby, um, oh, new Gatsby seventy-four, oh, and seventy-five requirements, those are real. Uh, oh, you know, and those numbers and the liabilities, oh, you know, are showing up right on financial statements. Uh, and it's having an impact. Um, I hope and I think, uh, that the credit rating, that the credit rating agencies are really, they understand, oh, why a lot of times, you know, a community's net position is in the negative and, oh, a lot of times, uh, like, it's only, uh, solely based on the OPEB liabilities, but it's certainly an issue. Oh, you know, and there's many, uh, uh, as we all know, there's many, uh, schools have thought, there's many, uh, questions about whether the OPEB liabilities, whether they will have true numbers, um, and what exactly they reflect, especially based on employees moving around so much now in municipal government. Oh, but the fact of the matter is, it does have to be dealt with, um, and it should be dealt with. And, um, and all the, uh, roles and the environments that I've worked in, especially in the past few years, we've made that, uh, a priority. For each of the three years, for each of the last three years, um, in the county, for example, we've, uh, funded, uh, the annual contribution into our OPEB, uh, trust fund at, uh, two hundred and seventy, uh, actually, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty and two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, uh, you know, there's like a due diligence, oh, you know, effort made because, again, it affects, oh, it does affect the bottom line and affects, oh, you know, a credit rating when you want to go out to bond. It affects just the overall, um, health and, you know, the picture of a, a community. So, I understand, oh, you know, that that's an investment that has to be made. Um, and what, oh, the town has been, uh, doing, I think, this year, you funded, uh, uh, the contribution in FY twenty at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and at the same time, I, I believe it was, oh, uh, your last town meeting, um, that the town voted, oh, uh, to actually transfer, uh, the trust fund over to the state, which, uh, you know, the interest rates and the, um, and the realization, oh, you know, of, oh, the liability being pretty significantly reduced, oh, would be really helpful to the town and, uh, you know, but so I think the due diligence and, um, and the commitment and the track record that the town, oh, you know, and really, your board has shown, oh, you know, oh, uh, like, and really meeting those goals and meeting that obligation to configure, uh, to really continue, oh, you know, and showing the fiscal health and stability of the community is, oh, actually, it really should be commended. Oh, you know, and if I, oh, like, and if I'm, if I have the honor, oh, enough of being high, if I have the honor enough of being high, and I would work with you to continue all of those contributions and to build on the success, uh, you know, and the track record that, oh, you know, oh, the board has already demonstrated and created.
Thank you. Now, you've got a little feel of Acushnet, you says. You drove through the reservoir and, uh, Main Street.
Main Street, yep, exactly.
All those areas around. And that, um, what do you have to think, or what kind of economic development do you think that the town might be able to, uh, to gain? Right now, we're ninety-one percent residential.
Yes.
So, it is a burden on the residents of Acushnet. Come up with the money, pay for things.
It's all on them, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, exactly, exactly. So, so where do you stand on economic development in Acushnet?
Uh, yeah, I mean, having, uh, spent the time that I've spent here, I mean, I've, oh, you know, just, oh, as an aside, I've had breakfast, uh, three times at the mill so far. I've had breakfast once at the shelves and, um...
A lot of politics goes on there, so.
Oh, I, I, I did hear. But, um, but, I mean, especially in the South Main Street, oh, you know, corridor, uh, you know, I think, oh, there could be some real opportunities there. Oh, you know, and going back to the town's, uh, work, I think, going back a ways, but, oh, on two thousand thirteen, I think the town's work was set in, oh, to look at that area, oh, you know, specifically, oh, you know, and the thing is, oh, oh, that could really come alive there. Oh, I think really provides a really good framework. Uh, every time I drive in, um, and around the South Main Street area, I, oh, like, I really see, um, oh, and our downtown has the same bones and has the same structure, um, an opportunity, in my opinion. Oh, you know, uh, uh, oh, you really see a quaint, uh, little village area, uh, just right across the river with the progress, uh, that's happening in the city, right over the river, uh, like, attracting incubator spaces, oh, you know, uh, over to the Salkum Street and the, oh, South Main Street area, oh, you know, I think of the, uh, the opportunity is really incredible. And at the same time, if, again, if I'm lucky enough to, uh, come to the town, I would look, oh, but to really advance and continue, oh, the partnerships, I will wish up it, um, oh, I can also hope, oh, oh, I can hopefully bring, hopefully being able to bring the state down as well. Oh, there's a lot of opportunities with the state right now, uh, like, in terms of their mass downtown initiatives, um, how, uh, like, exploring grants through the Mass Works program, oh, uh, to help complement, uh, the economic development, uh, needs with infrastructure, uh, like, and, uh, and at the same time, that could send to issues with the CWMP and, you know, really looking at, oh, you know, how the conversation you're having about the CWMP, uh, like, actually transcends in, oh, you know, but to really having an economic development plan that reflects, oh, you know, both sides of the picture. But, oh, in short, like, I really see, oh, you know, opportunity with South Main Street... oh, you know, both sides of the picture, but, oh, in short, like, I really see, oh, you know, opportunity with South Main Street. But again, oh, as with everything that happens in a community, oh, you know, those, oh, you know, those wishes, those hopes and dreams, they have to be really resident-driven, oh, you know, oh, they have to be the priorities of the residents and, oh, you know, oh, frankly, to the Board of Selectmen, oh, oh, because I really understand the need, oh, especially in a small town like Rockland and Akuschnitz, based on the history, based on the real, uh, small-town charm and feel, uh, that the town has and the surrounding, uh, neighborhoods around it, you want to make sure, oh, that what, like, is being considered and talked about really fits, oh, with the South Main Street area and, oh, and what we envision, what the board envisioned is something, oh, that the residents can really, oh, dream about and supporting get behind as well. So you have to, oh, in that sense, also, once you have that, oh, you know, it really provides a lot of, oh, really, a community support and momentum, oh, to help accomplishing, uh, those goals and realizing that vision. Um, and as, oh, you know, I outlined, oh, like, in the packet I handed, oh, oh, I built a track record of, of really doing just that. Oh, you know, I led the effort in Rockland, um, oh, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, to lead a forty-year, oh, smart growth overlay zoning district for, oh, housing and commercial and economic development opportunities, oh, right, oh, like, along our Union Street corridor. Um, and at the same, and at the same time we did that, oh, you know, oh, oh, I, I helped to create like a nonprofit group to really be the arm to, oh, really be the resident voice to support, oh, you know, the initiatives and the efforts that the town, uh, has, uh, continue working to advance. Uh, you know, and that's really, again, the, oh, you know, the focus of the project really being from the ground up and resident-driven, um, I think is really important because the last thing you, oh, 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 don't want to have happen is the fact that, oh, you know, we as a town have a vision, oh, but it's, oh, you know, really a, a, a complete no-go or nonstarter, oh, for town residents, especially the residents, oh, you know, whether it's in the South Main Street area, oh, like, or any other area. And I think with everything, uh, that's happening with the train coming into Bedford, oh, on across the river, I think to be, oh, exploring those things and bringing those type of partnerships in to, oh, really explore those things, I think is an, just an amazing opportunity that the town has right now.
Very good, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Mr. Deroche, you good?
Uh-huh.
All right, Mr. Mullen, back to you.
Yes.
So in, uh, probably, I guess, your remaining time, um, don't, you've got twenty minutes left, don't use all that, though.
Are you sure? I mean, I can easily do that if you like.
We gave you, we gave you an hour, but, um, why should we, why should we hire you as, as Akuschnitz's next, uh, Town Administrator? So this, so closing comments and, and what, what would you bring to the job? Why should we pick you as our next Town Administrator?
Why should you hire me? Um, so I believe, oh, really, you should hire me because, like, I love this work, um, I really have, oh, a true passion for this work, I love, oh, as I mentioned at the outset, like, I really love, oh, the community, I love local government, like, I love working to make, oh, an impact, whether it's on an economic development issue or, you know, oh, an issue where there's Mrs. Smith, oh, you know, oh, from Mill Street, for example, just has a question about her trash pickup. Oh, like, I love that because those are the things that, oh, really make communities tick, oh, like, and it gives the fabric, um, the pride, oh, that you have here. Um, and I think on top of, and I really love about Akuschnitz, uh, you know, I think, oh, you know, that the opportunities that you have in term, oh, like, in the issues, oh, oh, that you're going to be dealing, whether it's, oh, you know, working with the school department and the MSBA, oh, like, on the new partial roof, oh, for the elementary school, whether it's on the CWMP, oh, you know, those are the things, um, those are the relationships that I really thrive on, oh, and helping, um, oh, really, oh, working with the board to manage those issues and make, oh, like, all those initiatives a reality. Um, I also think, just my experience, the fact, oh, you know, that I've been involved in, oh, you know, a local government, that I have been an administrator, that, uh, you know, I really, uh, as you have probably and hopefully seen that, oh, you know, I love this work and I take it extremely seriously and, oh, you know, like, and I've always believed that you have to, oh, take it seriously and responsibly, uh, but I really believe you can have fun, oh, you know, oh, and really enjoy all of it while doing it. Oh, and having, and having the opportunity to work for the town with all the department heads, oh, like, and the employees you have here, uh, like, I've heard, oh, nothing but incredible things, oh, like, about all your employees and your department heads, uh, and I really just love the opportunity to come in, to dig in, to work with them and to make, oh, and really, to continue making, oh, of the town as a whole, oh, you know, really like a good, oh, and strong and fun place to work and have a career, oh, you know, and, you know, to advance an environment here where, oh, you know, everyone just loves everything about their job and it just, uh, you know, it sounds so hokey, but again, like, I love this work, I have a passion for it, I have experience, oh, you know, on many levels, at the state and local government, um, uh, actually working to achieve community goals and priorities. And I'm just really excited about the job and the, on the opportunity, oh, you know, but to really come before you to, and frankly, the opportunity I've had to, oh, you know, really come this far in the process as well, it's been just incredible, uh, you know, oh, you know, but coming down eighteen to one oh five and, oh, driving around the reservoir area there, it's a nice, and, I mean, I've had, oh, like, a lot of fun these past, oh, two months or so really doing that and, oh, oh, again, to know and love and appreciate, oh, your community. So I thank you for the opportunity and I, and I thank you for your consideration and I wish you all the luck and no matter, oh, oh, where you go on your decision-making, but, um, I just have to say, it's been a whole lot of fun and a great experience, oh, you know, having done what I've done the past two months here, so, thank you.
And there are new materials in here that we didn't have before, correct?
Yes, exactly, yeah, like, I wanted to highlight, uh, some of the work experiences, uh, like, and frankly, uh, the economic development experiences, uh, you know, that I've been a part of, both in Brockton and Rockland. Um, I, um, I also included some of my work experience relating to budgets, oh, for the county, oh, um, as well as, oh, grant initiatives, um, I've been a part of for the county and for the town of Rockland. Um, and then, like, I did include, oh, five reference letters as well, just so, oh, you know, I can only talk so much about myself and I really don't like talking about myself, uh, so, and so rather than me talking and, oh, wasting the rest of my twenty minutes, uh, like, I wanted you to hear.
You're entitled to your twenty minutes.
Exactly, no.
Bad sense of humor, you.
No, thank you, I have an awful sense of humor too, which I think is kind of funny sometimes, but, anyway, that's that.
I think I'm hilarious, I...
Oh, no, I do too, I do too, Mr. Chairman, I absolutely...
You're a comedian, you're mine, huh?
Mike, just one thing that I think you need to let the board know about. At the time, uh, Mr. Mullen filed his application, he was indeed the Assistant County Director, and he has recently had a promotion, he is now the County Director, and his resume doesn't reflect that yet because it's, it happened very recently.
Yes, it did.
So, I don't know if you mentioned that, I didn't hear, you said, I wanted the board to know where.
And you know, then, oh, oh, on the middle of our twelve hours, uh, like, actually, I'll thank Hegarty, who, oh, his references included in your packet, he retired my old boss, uh, like, oh, oh, thankfully, and, uh, you know, and I'm honored by, uh, the three elected commissioners for the county, they, oh, had the faith and trust in me, oh, well, a few weeks ago, they did promote me, oh, like, as, oh, like, uh, as the County Director, uh, 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 oh, which has been a great honor, but, oh, you know, oh, oh, really hasn't changed anything in terms of my thinking and wanting to be, uh, here in Akuschnitz, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mullen, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gafford, thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Good to see you, Mike.
Thank you, I'll talk to you soon after Thanksgiving. Thank you, you as well.
Happy Thanksgiving holidays.
Do we want a five-minute recess, or do we want a, five-minute recess?
Yeah, five minutes, please.
Okay, uh, motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
We'll recess for five, uh...
I'll work, Julie.
Yep, thank you. Twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, it is one forty, and we are meeting with Julie Hebert, who is the fourth of four candidates for our, a Town Administrator position. Julie's been our interim Town Administrator for the past two months and is the town's, uh, Town Accountant and Chief Financial Officer for the Town of Akuschnitz as well, so, welcome, Julie. Let me tell you how the program goes, you get, um, up to fifteen minutes to make some opening comments, um, and then we'll move to, um, questions, first, Mr. Gasper's second, Mr. Deroche's third, and then at the end, you know, five to ten minutes, why we should hire you as a Town Administrator, so...
Okay.
Um, with that, to you for, uh, you know, again, up to fifteen-minute introduction, but, you know, and, and just so you know, uh, most people have been averaging about forty-five minutes, but the whole hour is fine, so, whatever you want.
All right, well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for having me here today and for the opportunity that I've already had in being your interim Town Administrator. Um, it's, it was a, a nice boost of confidence, um, when Brian left that you guys thought of me to take over, and it's been, um, quite an experience. Um, you know, it's been a lot doing two jobs at once, but I've learned a lot and, um, if anything, whatever happens after this, it's an experience that I'll take with me and, you know, continue to grow from there, so, I want to thank you guys for giving me that opportunity and, um, for trusting me with the town for these last three months. Um, this is kind of weird for me because I already know you guys, um, I work here, so...
Weird for us too.
So, giving a little background, I feel like you guys already know me, but I guess for the people at home, um, my, my main background started off in law, so I have my law degree, I'm a certified attorney. Um, I've kept my license up and, uh, my first jobs were mainly in law. Um, the companies that I worked for, that I did, um, lawyer, um, positions for, um, were based in finance, so, um, after working there for a multitude of years, um, taking the commute into Boston, I had an opportunity to move and take a town position as an accountant. Um, I have no real finance background, um, my bachelor's is not in finance, um, but I was given an opportunity and I took it and, um, I learned a lot really quick. Um, I think it's one of my strengths is that I can pick things up pretty quickly. So I went to the town of Blackstone, became their Town Accountant for, um, about four years before I came here. Um, I think that my law background has really helped me with a lot of things for the municipality. Um, a lot of finance is based on master of law here, um, so, having that law background in my finance world has been great because it helps me interpret, um, what the statutes are saying and how we should be spending the money. Um, but for this opportunity, I think it's even more important, uh, one of the things, I, I knew what I was getting into doing the Administrator position, um, but there's a lot more legal aspect to the Town Administrator position than even I had, um, anticipated. Um, so I think that having that background, um, is a good backdrop for me, so, um, when issues come up, property issues, things like that, that I don't have direct experience with, my law background has been a good backbone for me to, um, look on with that. Um, that's just a little, that's a little background about me, um, and again, it's, it's, I, it's kind of weird. I already know you guys, so, anything else?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
The shocker there is you don't have a finance background.
I have no finance background.
Just didn't click.
Just fixed it up.
You've had me fooled for a while. So, um, so we've got questions, we're sort of, we're asking the same questions, for the most part, to the candidates, and, and the first one I've got for you is, um, this is a soft, underhand softball that, you know, hit over the wall, but we're asking this, but I think for, for the benefit of the people, um, that are watching this at home, I think it's, it's, it's good that we're asking all the candidates the same question. So, the first question's about the, uh, the town budget and the town budget process, and as a Town Administrator, how would you manage that process?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, how would you bring the department heads together? How would you coordinate with the departments that are outside the purview of the Board of Selectmen? How would you, uh, work with the Board of Selectmen and present budgets and, um, again, underhand is softball, but everybody's got the same question, so.
This is my world.
This is your world.
So, um, the budget is, is big and I think, um, the best method of, um, getting ready for your budget for the next year, we always send out, um, drafts to the, um, different department heads and boards, um, early. Um, I've actually already gotten them back, um, for this year, I had a due date of November twentieth, and I've gotten them back from everybody, uh, almost everybody. Um, so we look at, what is your anticipated budget for the next fiscal year? Any issues that are coming up, contractual issues, um, that we need to look at, um, you know, personnel issues, bring everything to the table, um, let us know what you're looking at. Um, also, the capital plan, any big capital items that you're looking at, we kind of bring it all together early. Um, I think at that point, the best, um, procedure is that the Administrator with the Finance Director and/or a member of the Selectmen, um, if they want to, sit down with the bigger departments or the ones that have bigger changes, um, to kind of go through the draft of the budget. Um, what is this, what is this number here, what does it involve? Is there a way that we can, um, reach this goal without having an increase, um, in this line item? Um, trying to be creative before you present something to the Selectmen, um, to, to make sure that what you're looking at is the best budget at that moment for the departments. Um, after that point, we would present it to the Selectmen. Um, I think it's important that the Selectmen sit with the departments, especially the bigger ones, you know, your police, your fire, um, DPW, but the Selectmen should see all the budgets, get to talk to the department heads to see what they're looking at and kind of get that seen back and forth, what are the increases that you're looking at, what are the capital items? Um, and at that point, uh, we would go, as long as the Selectmen approved everything, we would take that budget and bring it to the Finance Committee. Um, and then that kind of goes through, they, they meet with all the department heads. If there are any changes that occur from the time the Selectmen see the budget, um, to, you know, like, if, if they occur after the fact, then I would bring the department back to the Selectmen so that they can hear all of the changes. Um, I think it's important that everyone has a good idea of what they're looking at. Um, having multiple people with their own ideas, sometimes there's, like I said, sometimes there's, uh, an idea of, you know, an increase that you have and somebody might come up with an idea of how you could save money, um, doing something different instead of just, you know, paying a contractor or something like that. Um, so it's good to bring everyone together and, and have those ideas flowing so that we can, um, get the best, um, overall budget that will be the best for the residents and for the taxpayers. Um, but, yeah, that's, that's kind of the, the process that I look at, making sure everyone's approving everything, um, bringing to the Finance Committee, um, the final budget from the Selectmen, and, um, once everyone's voted and approved, um, obviously, at that point, you're looking at your revenues to make sure you're balancing your budget out, so you start off with the expenses, at the same time, you look at your revenues, um, trying to get creative with what revenues you have. Um, I know that this is something that's come up before, we've talked about indirect costs, um, um, any other pilot agreements, any, any other kind of outside areas where you might be able to pull revenue to offset a cost. Um, all this stuff should be brought up and discussed ahead of time um, so that once we get through all of the, the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we have a, a well-rounded budget that can go to town meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, related, but not, um, so in the town of Akuschnitz, over the years, we've, we take a step back. We've got, the town budget's basically two big pieces. Piece one comes under the Board of Selectmen, piece two comes under the School Department, the Superintendent of Schools, the School Committee, and, and over the years, we've had both, uh, you know, most recently, very cooperative relationships and, but, but in years past, it was, um, in sometime, sometimes a hostile relationship where it was, you know, ours and yours, and, um, I prefer the cooperative relationship, and I guess, um, and that was, you know, this last budget cycle, I think that was, there was a lot of evidence of the fact that it was a cooperative process. How do you foster that continuing and how do you work cooperatively with the, with the School Committee and the Superintendent and the Business Office at the school to, to make sure that we all understand that it's one community and we're all sharing the dollars that are available to us?
Um, so one of the things that, um, Brian had initiated that, um, we've been continuing, although the last few months have been difficult, um, we've been meeting with the school Business Administrator and the Superintendent on a monthly basis to go through their current budget for, for the current fiscal year, what issues they're having, um, how they're looking for their surplus or deficit for the end of the year, um, and then also discussing the future budget, what items are, big items that might come up that will impact their budget for the next fiscal year, um, capital items... the next fiscal year, capital items, and talking about these, these things early, I think it really helped, and it showed again in last year's budget. There's a give and take. Obviously, there's only so much money in the whole pool, so when the school had certain items where they couldn't budge, they needed to fund, you know, special ed costs or things like that, the town looked inward, too, to say, all right, what can we give up maybe, or finagle in-house, you know, maybe doing more in-house work, or, you know, not taking on a certain position that might have been helpful for us, but we can put it off for another year. You kind of do the back and forth with the school, and I think that those meetings have been really helpful to kind of get it started early, so we have a good idea of what we're looking at for the future and for the current year. So, I would continue that, and I do think it's really important to have a good relationship with the school. We are one town, we can't just ignore everything that's going on over there and kind of put up a wall to it. We have to work with them together, so that we can make sure that our budget is sound, that it works for the town, it works for the school, and we can say that we did everything for both sides to make sure that we have what everybody needs for the year.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Gasper.
You done? What sources of revenue would you use to balance budgets?
What sources of revenue?
On a year-over-year basis.
Yeah, well, so, you're starting off with your tax levy.
On a year-over-year basis.
Yeah, every year. Your tax levy is the first thing that you would start with. So, you're taking your levy from last year, you're adding your two-and-a-half percent, you're looking at your new growth estimate that you would get from the assessor, you're looking at your overlay that you would also get from the assessor, and you plug in all of those figures, and you would get your new estimated tax levy for the year. Then you look at your state receipts. So, typically, we like to keep them level funded for a budget. We do get estimates from this, the House, from the Senate, from the governor throughout the budget process, and typically, it's not going up very much. So, we like to keep it about level funded from the last year. Then you have your local receipts, so motor vehicle excess, excise, various licenses, permits, fees, and so what I, what I've done in the past in looking at those has been taking a five-year average. So, most recently, we've been increasing the motor vehicle excise estimate for revenue, and that's because we've just been, the number has been so much higher. So, when I started here, we were estimating eight hundred thousand dollars in that category, and we were getting one point five million. So, that created a lot of excess that wasn't really necessary. So, we try to keep the number conservative, where we know we're not going to get less than that amount, but close enough where we're not building too much extra free cash and putting a burden on the taxpayers that we don't need to. So, you would take all of your local receipts, again, try to come up with a good average, and make sure that the number is conservative, and then you have other sources of revenue. So, for us right now, we have the ambulance, the receipts reserved from the ambulance, we have free cash, we've used overlay in the past, and in that category could also be if we did approve indirect costs, that would come from that category as well. But you only have so many categories that you can really work with. Most everything is, when it comes to the tax, the tax levy and the state aid, you're kind of stuck with what you get.
Because some of the ones that you mentioned, they're not reoccurring. So, budgeting, for budgeting purposes, I would say, ex nay. I know we did certain things last year about overlay surplus.
Yeah.
But that was on one-time expenditure, which was supposed to be from the excise revenue.
Yep.
And instead, we did it, we balanced the budget with that money, and the previous town administrator only did it as a one-shot, where we're supposed to do more road payment.
Got it. Yeah, so, so what you said is correct.
Because that revenue's not always there year-over-year.
It's not always there.
Like the overlay surplus, if, if the assessors have so much built up, we know that we can go in and take a little bit from that, and those would usually be spent on one-time expenditures.
Yeah.
Because you're not going to see a reoccurring every year.
Exactly. So, your other sources of revenue, the only one that I would say is reoccurring for us is the EMS, the receipts reserved from the ambulance. They have an amount that has been there since before I got here, and then they've also been funding their debt payment for the new ambulance. But yeah, you're right. Anything else? I mean, the free cash, the overlay, those are all supposed to be one-time expenses, and one of the things that I, I did in coming in here, too, was, they were using free cash as a recurring, a recurring revenue, which you're not supposed to do. So, the DOR frowns on it. I'm actually shocked that they allowed us to have budgets that used one point two million dollars of free cash to balance a budget.
Correct.
Increasing, and it increases every year, because like you're saying, if you're using it to balance your budget, every year, your budget is based on that number plus whatever else you have, you know, your, your increases for salaries or whatever it might be. So, you're going to need to keep using that amount plus more, unless you have another revenue that comes from somewhere else. So, one of the things that I did when I came in here was look at how to reduce that dependence on free cash, and we were able to do that pretty successfully. I think we're down to about four hundred and sixty thousand. When I came in, it was at one point two, so, but you're right. So, those should, those should, should be one-time expenses, overlay and free cash, but, you know...
Sometimes things happen.
Yeah.
We actually charged the previous town administrator with weaning us a hundred percent off using free cash for budgetary reasons.
Yeah. Last, and reading last year, because, you know, that, that's part of my job, too, I think, as the finance director. I'm in charge of the finances. I look at that budget just as much, and try to be creative in coming up with other ways. I've been bringing up the indirect costs as a way to, as another source of revenue, and every year, we've, we've gotten along with it too late in the process to be able to use it. But yeah, last year was, it was frustrating. It was really hard because we had a plan to cut it back again, but I think there were just so many things with the, with the school having a lot of special ed costs as well at the end, that just making the balanced budget was, was pretty tough.
Absolutely.
So...
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you believe the current public pension system is sustainable? If so, why? If not, what reform would you suggest to make it sustainable?
You love this. So, this is a tough one. We've talked about this before. The pension system, I think it's, it's working for right now. I know that it was on the pay-as-you-go, right? And then the actuaries came over, GASB regulations changed, they looked at, how can we create a liability to look for the future? And they did that. So, what we're paying now is the pay-as-you-go amount plus the future amount, what, what that liability would be if everyone here retired today, which isn't real. So, I think that the number, looking to the future and, and, and that kind of idea, it's worked, and I know that it has an end date. Like, for us, our end date of the old liability is twenty-twenty-eight, so relatively soon, we'll be done with that kind of excess liability and just continuing the pay-as-you-go. It's hard to say if it's going to fail in the future. Obviously, the, the impact is the taxpayers. As long as there are taxpayers and, and the state can force the taxpayers to keep paying the bill, it works. If it hits a point where the tax... No, right, though? I mean, so, ultimately, that's it.
That's the truth.
That's the truth. As long as, as long as they can put the bill on the taxpayers, and you, you have no choice but to increase your taxes, it'll work. I think, at some point, could there be an issue where the tax burden has become too high, and the, the state will have to step in and do something else to help? I'm sure. I'm sure. And, and it goes that way with a lot of things. I know we've brought up OPEB as well, and it's along that same avenue. The only difference that I see with OPEB is, right now, the retirement is, is handled by the state retirement system. With OPEB, we are paying our own as-you-go health insurance, so even though we have to fund the OPEB and, and put it into this trust, we can pull the money out ourselves and pay for, if, if all of a sudden, a bunch of people did retire, and we had this huge health insurance increase next year, we could pull money from our OPEB to help offset the costs for us right now. So, that, that's the only difference I see, is it's, it's our own kind of internal system as opposed to through the state. But yeah, I think at some point, we, the, the state's most likely going to have to help out with something, where the taxpayers will be.
PO'd?
Yeah.
To say it politely?
Yeah.
It's not an endless piggy bank, right?
No.
I think that's the mentality of some people in government.
No, and I...
We just keep going back to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
We just keep going back to the taxpayers, and you can't just, sooner or later, I mean, there's only so much disposable income within the families that make the composition of the community, right? Not only just here in Kuschnit, but everywhere, right?
Right. And I, but I think that goes with a lot of things with the budget, and I know, I know Brian did a lot with, let's say, looking at all, not just like a retirement expense, looking at all of our expenses and all of our revenues, and, and thinking outside the box, how we can make them better. So, when we went out and got a different health insurance, and we changed our health insurance, I, I think, when I did the numbers, we've saved about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year from switching our health insurance. So, yeah, I mean, at some point, some of these bigger things might break the bank for the taxpayers, but in the meantime, I think it's important that the people who are here are thinking outside the box to come up with some different ways of easing some of the expenses and easing some of the revenues. One of the other things that comes to mind is the Green Communities Grants. Our, I think, Marley sent an email the other day that we're down like eighty-seven percent on our, our electricity usage in Town Hall, because we've switched over to all the high efficiency, yeah, everything. And I mean, that budget, I think, when I got here, was like eighty thousand, it's down to twenty. So, I mean, sixty thousand is not a lot in the scheme of a thirty-two million dollar budget, but it's, it's a lot.
It's money.
It's, it's money.
It's real money.
Helps out, yeah.
I don't like when people say ten thousand is not a lot of money, when, and we compare it to a thirty-two or thirty-five million dollar budget, wherever we're at now, but it's real money.
It's money.
Doesn't matter if it's five thousand or ten thousand, it's real money.
Right.
Let's...
No?
Back to you, back to you, Julie.
Okay.
Another question, Mr. Gasper.
At year-end, departments are able to transfer money from one line item to another. In the past, those transfers would be voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee before the expenditure would, could be made. In the last few years, that process has diminished. What is your opinion we got on the issue?
So, I'm a legal person, and I follow the law, so, and I, and I'm such a straight-A student that it's hard for, it's hard for me on some of these things. So, my opinion is, you're, you're not supposed to do the expense until you have an appropriation, so you should not charge that amount until you have the appropriation, which would have to be approved by the selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's the answer he was looking for. I'll set, Mr. Gasper.
There's right answers and there's wrong answers, right?
I mean, there's right answers and there's wrong answers. You made that one clear.
I didn't know if there was any more.
Mr. DeRoch. You all set? I'm sorry.
I'm all set, Mr. DeRoch.
Julie, how do you balance the town's desire to deploy the best and the brightest with the town's ability to pay?
Yeah, so, I think, I think it's, it's, first of all, it's been really great that the selectmen have looked at doing the wage and classification and doing it correctly. I know, again, from a legal standpoint, it's important that we cover ourselves and make sure that we're paying people the right amount, and not getting into an issue where there's an Equal Pay Act violation. You know, this only, we've talked about this, there's only so much money in the bucket, positions are only worth so much, and Kuschnit, we've, we've kind of talked about wanting to stay in the middle. We're a small community, we're not a city, we can't afford to pay the most money, you know, at, at the very top of the scale, but we should do a little bit better than the very bottom, too. And, so I think that it's important that we, we keep looking at the middle, but I think there are also things that the town can do to make people happy beyond a salary amount. And it's not, it isn't big things. I know that you guys have looked at the hours and the hour schedule, and when you've considered it, you've thought about the employees, too, and it, it is a benefit for the employees as well as the residents, which is a small thing that doesn't cost the town anything, but it does a lot for the employees in keeping them happy. One of the things that I think is important as a leader, as a boss, to the, to the staff here, is keeping the morale up by making sure people are encouraged when they're doing well. Again, it's something that doesn't, you know, letting people know, hey, you did a really good job with this. Enjoying the environment that you work in means more than money for some people, and one of the things that I would like to do along those lines, which kind of also goes along with helping improve communication with the residents and with the selectmen, it would be really great if I had the time, if I could do this, to do like a monthly newsletter. Actually, my town administrator in the town I live in, Dayton, she does this, and I think it's fantastic. It kind of gives an overview for, you know, the residents of like the bigger things that are going on, but at the end, she always includes a section where, I think she calls it the Big Cheese Award, but it recognizes one of the departments for something good that they did. And I think doing something like that, whether it's through a newsletter or some other way of encouraging department heads, employees, staff, anybody who would work for the town, that you're being recognized, and people appreciate that you did this, you know, good work, I think sometimes that makes up for a salary pay increase, so...
How do you feel about what direction we can move in with economic development? I know Henry's creating a, or working on, and town is working on a new master plan.
Yeah. So... So, this is funny for me. I thought a lot about the economics, because Kuschnit enjoys being a small town, you know? What I gather from the people when I talk to the residents is that you, it, it's a small town, you enjoy the fact that there are no streetlights here, that's, that's something that's referred between all the, you know, the residents. So, the economics, it's interesting, because my sense is that people don't necessarily want all this booming economy to come to Kuschnit to disrupt the small community farming historic town that we have, but at the same time, we need to think about how we can prepare for revenue needs in the future. I think doing the master plan is a great idea. We have the CWMP that we'll be talking about tomorrow night. There are a lot of big things coming up, where we could bring in some, you know, some, some different industry to the town, but maybe do it in a way that won't upset that small-town feel. So, I think that the best thing we can do is to discuss it ahead of time, to get all the groups, not just the boards, get the residents involved, which would happen in a master plan survey. Bring everyone together, hear what people are, are thinking, what their needs are, what they want, and, and then kind of go from there, but I think it would be a full community discussion, because everyone, again, my sense is, people don't really want this boom of, you know, economy of, you know, stores and changing the culture of this town, but we need something that will help ease the burden for the taxpayers at some point in the future. So, I think just being as prepared as we can be, doing these plans, and getting it all together with everyone's opinions would be the best route.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Oh, thanks.
That was the last question?
Last question.
All right. Ms. Hebert, you've got five to ten minutes.
I won't do it.
Why should, why should we hire you as?
That's right.
Okay.
Right, we have other people here with, you've never been a town administrator before.
No. No, I've never. So, obviously, I, I lack the experience that some of the other candidates might have. I've never been a town administrator, but I do have municipal background with finance, and I have a law background. I think both are relevant to the town administrator's position. A lot of the things that the town administrator would be handling are things that I've already managed between doing both of those positions. I think it's an advantage for me that I already work here. I know the department heads, I know the selectmen, I know the boards. We have a great group of department heads that I work with on a daily basis, and I, I think we all have a mutual respect for each other, so having that relationship already is a huge benefit. You know, I just, I think I, I don't have the experience, but I've picked up on a lot of things quickly in the past. Again, I have no finance background, I just picked it up, I care a lot about where I work. I love this town. I, you know, I've worked here for three years, and I really enjoy it. It reminds me so much of the town that I live in, and I loved moving to the town I moved to in Dayton, because I hated the city. You know, I worked in Boston, so, and I know you do, too. When you work in the city, you, you grow this appreciation for the small town, the quiet, the country, and I see that here, too, and I, and I just love working here. Trying to think of what else I want to say. You know, I just, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm a driven person, this is, it was an opportunity that opened up. I always had a, an end goal of maybe being an administrator someday, and when this opportunity came up, I, I had to go for it. I think, I think I would be really good at it. I care a lot, I'm pretty driven, and I, I would just want to do everything I could to make Kuschnit as, you know, a better place, so... Anything else for me?
No, I think we're good, that's it. You kept us on a good schedule.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Julie.
I'll just see it. Okay.
Good to talk to you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving.
So I, we never really talked about the process, and we never talked about coming to conclusions and how we would do that. We've got to do that in an open session, honestly. I, we've now met with, we've now met with a four. In my head, I think there were two that I'd consider and two that I probably would not. The only, and I think either of them would be acceptable candidates, the only additional step I've considered, I wanted to meet with the candidates first, I've not done any of this, but to speak maybe with some of the members of the screening committee to see what they thought about the candidates. And I've not said who the two I prefer and who the two I don't.
No, no.
But I, I mean, I'm one person, if you two are comfortable, if you've got a decision, I'm not going to point us in the wrong direction. If you're ready to move, we can move, but the piece I'd like to do to feel like I've completed the process in my mind is to speak with some of the people on the screening committee to find out what their thoughts are. I suspect that they've ranked, in their heads ranked the four that we've talked to and maybe saw something that I didn't. So I would, I would think that would be the only step I'd need, but I think this needs to happen quickly because, you know, there are others that are finalists elsewhere, and are we still, we've still got somebody that's a finalist elsewhere?
Of your remaining four candidates, I think one is in a hiring process elsewhere.
Okay.
And the other two are, and two are not.
Okay.
So two and two.
What are you all, what are you thinking?
Like the holiday weekend, digest some of what we've gotten, look over some of the notes.
Okay, and we've got some new material from Mr. DeRoe.
I've already done a little bit of talking to some other screening committee members that I didn't have on as my appointees. I think it's very good that you do that and speak to and keep an open mind that, you know, some of the reasons why some of these individuals may want one over the other, I'm very open-minded when I'm discussing that with these screening committee members, that there is maybe advantageous for one person to be nominated as the next town administrator and not others, right? So I think that it's up to us to figure that out, and so I think that you're spot-on, maybe you should have that conversation.
And I was going to pick up the phone this past weekend, I said, no, I don't want them to point me toward or away somebody, I want a first impression and then I want the conversation, so.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it was interesting because after our first with Ron C. Angelo, he had left the interview, I actually called him up that afternoon and asked him a few more follow-up questions because, you know, it was something that we set a timeline to, I thought it was important that I reach out to him and speak to him, and we had, you know, a good conversation for a half an hour, 40 minutes, and I may want to do that with the candidates that we just interviewed today, so, I mean, with holidays coming up upon us, it's two days away.
That's right.
You know, we'll figure something out, maybe discuss it, you know, and see what, you know, we charged the committee with a certain obligation to do for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Pecos was, you know, in front of that with Chairman Dagan, so I think that we need to consider that as well, and ultimately, it's, you know, we try to figure out who the individual's going to be the best fit for the community, you know, and what's going to work, what's going to work best for the town. I think, I think these questions, you know, I liked your question, you know, working with the school committee and school business administration, because we did have, over the years, yes, me and I were both former Finance Committee members, we did have some hustle, and it wasn't pleasurable trying to divvy up the pie, right? And, you know, it's tough, you know, you've got these unions on this side and needs on this side, and then you have the school committee with their own that we, as the Board of Selectmen, don't see and hear every day, right? So it's, you know, I think that, you know, we've done a pretty good job of trying to bring that together over the last several years, and, you know, I think it's opened my eyes for sure, having a better relationship with the schools.
You need to.
Than what it has been in the past, and, you know, knowledgeable on what the hell's going on at the school department, I think at least knowing that we have a certain amount of pie divvied up and we understand their issues and the problems that they're facing, it helps, it really does. I know it's helped me anyway, so I like that, and, you know, we're just going to figure this out, and hopefully the board will come up with a good plan for the future.
Mr. DeRoe, what are your thoughts?
Well, I agree that time is of the essence, but there's no immediate rush to judgment. I would like to have a week, go through the holiday.
I'd like to pick a date today, though, let's set a target.
Decide, you know, and I have spoken with different search committee members already, and so, you know, I do have a direction that I am going in, but it still needs to refine it, so we do agree.
How about a...
We made a good choice and work on that.
We've got a meeting scheduled tomorrow night.
We have a meeting tomorrow night.
It's too quick, but how about a daytime meeting next week?
Got a date?
Tuesday the 3rd in the morning. I could also do Monday, I could also do Monday the 2nd in the morning.
Yeah, Tuesday's better, Mondays are kind of tough.
All right.
Tuesdays works.
Do you want to do that Tuesday the 2nd, what time, 8:00, 8:30?
I don't have a problem, I have a pretty open schedule, this Monday's kind of...
Yeah, Tuesday the 3rd.
It's good for you guys, I'm good.
Eight o'clock.
Tuesday the 3rd, 8:00 AM?
You like those 8:00 AMs, huh?
I, sooner the better.
They're a lot better.
8:00 AM.
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock?
Is it eight?
Eight o'clock.
Is it eight?
That's fine, we'll get that out of the way.
And let's, let's...
Deliberate a little bit and just have some...
With the plan to make a decision at that meeting, and we'll all do whatever, additional outreach to the candidates, potentially, additional outreach to the screening committee members potentially, and hopefully come to a decision at that meeting, 8 o'clock on December 3rd, I'll make sure we post that.
When I invite any other candidates to our decision-making process?
Um, no.
I think that would be bad for...
No, I don't think we...
No, candidates, generally speaking, it's inappropriate for them to sit in.
Listen to our deliberation.
Even though your meeting is...
It's an open meeting.
Is an open meeting.
It's an open meeting.
And they have a right to do it. It is not considered professionally appropriate for candidates to sit in on your decision.
It just makes it awkward, it makes it awkward.
Nor anyone else's interview, generally, the universal behavior is they do their interview and then they...
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
And it's an open meeting, but it would be awkward, so...
And we expedited this relatively quickly since the screening committees turned this over to us, I mean, I don't think we agreed very fast in what we have, really.
Yeah, a couple things, if I may, Mr....
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Pecos, go ahead.
Suggest to the board. Number one, the normal procedure, and which also comports with the law, is you pick your candidate, and there's a couple of different ways to do that, I'll make a couple suggestions to you to help expedite the process, but you do that in an open meeting, obviously. Then the next step, and it's not really in my contract with you, but I don't care about that, you guys know I'll do anything it takes to help you get the right person, but there should be some due diligence done on the resume, so when you pick your candidate, this would be some verification, and I'm not suggesting to you in any way that any of your candidates have done anything to be completely forthcoming and truthful about their resumes, but as President Reagan once famously said...
Trust but verify.
Trust but verify.
Yeah.
So I would like, in fact, the screening committee asked about it, and I said to them, there's no point trying to check resume verification on, you know, 23 candidates. So proper time to do that is once you've selected your candidate, then let me do that for you. I'll get you the documentation that proves that what they say is accurate, degrees, things like that. And that's just a, and I'm sure it's, everybody, whoever you pick, is going to give you exactly what they say is on their resume, but you should do that. God forbid, you hire somebody and you find out in five years they don't have the degree they said they had, that's going to make you look bad, it's going to make me look bad, and it's going to make everybody look bad, plus it's falsification and it's a grave ethics violation, so.
So you've done that for the board already, right, so we don't have to do that, as far as degrees?
I don't do it, but only on the one candidate, because frankly, doing it, Kev, on five people, three people, four, it's just a waste of time, so. But there's a pause, once you make your decision who the candidate is, and you announce it and you say, we're offering you the position, then there's a pause while we do that. It's just a couple days, I can usually get it done in a day, and I just kind of say, yep, verification, everything's good, get the records in here, the copy is made for each of the board members so you can see, yep, everything they said is true. Then you decide what you want to do for reference checks. Now, I can't urge you in a strong enough possible terms to check references, because, and that can be a couple of different things, again, you have a legal right to do it...
Mr. Healy's got reference letters from two people I know, so...
Yeah, so legally, you have the right to do it on as many, do anything once people become finalists that you want, and have that verification from all of them that they don't mind being publicly identified, so, but it's a lot easier to just do it on your one selected candidate. And the board can do different things, you can ask me to check references, happy to do it, I think it's better if you do it, because you want to ask those questions of prior employers, and you want to hear them say whatever it is, and then you might have follow-up questions. So sometimes board members will say, okay, you know, Dave, you're going to check this former employer, and Kev, you're going to check that former employer, and Roger, you're going to check this former employer, however you want to divvy it up, we haven't actually asked them for references, some submitted...
I was just thinking, yeah.
Everybody has.
Yeah.
I did notice that some did, right?
Right, the normal time to ask for references...
Mr. Mullin, I think, gave us a couple of letters.
Yeah, and that's normal, but the requisite time to ask for references is when you extend an offer of employment. And then you say to them, hey, we'd like to offer you the position, we're going to do a verification of your resume, and we'd like however many references you want, and you decide what mix of character and work references you want typically for this kind of a process, you get work references, not character. So you ask for three to five work references, and then you decide before you get them what the process of verification is going to be, and sometimes, you know, I had boards of selectmen when I was a candidate actually go to the town where I worked and set up interviews and brought people in to talk about me, and that's a pretty rich process, but it takes some time. I don't know that you need to do that, but I'm just sort of saying, it's kind of the penultimate process, the more normal processes, the candidate gives you two or three, and if you see on that list of references something conspicuously absent, like the candidate that you like and you want, and you've extended the offer to, doesn't have the chairman of the Board of Selectmen I worked for, well, you might want to give that chairman a copy, because maybe there's something going on there and you want to know about it. And then once the reference check is done, the resume verification is done, then the board, once all that information is compiled, the board will typically meet again, probably at your next regular meeting or special meeting, and basically, because you got the advantage of all that information, I'll be giving it to you privately, but you want to share it with the public. The board checked the following things. As I said, your screening committee is expecting you to check the resumes, they offered to do it and I waved them off. I said, that's not appropriate for the screening committee, that's appropriate, that's the board's turf, so they very graciously said, sure. So you want to share with the public that you've done that step and that everything checked out, and anybody wants a copy of so-and-so's master's degree, here it is. And the reference check basically decides, depending how you divvy that work up, you want to report back to one another, again, everything you do is public, so, hey, I called so-and-so, and I called so-and-so, and they said this, that's all paid. And usually that'll check out pretty well. Excuse me. And then once that's done, then basically your work is done, and you've already, at that point, you've already extended an offer of employment to a candidate, so during that pause while you're checking those things, usually you say to the candidate, send us your draft contract, and it's going to take them a few days to prepare that draft contract. Some of these folks have been out interviewing, so they've already got it done.
Alternatively, we could say, here is your draft contract, I mean that.
Well, what I would suggest to you, at the next meeting, when you pick your candidate and you extend the offer, I'll give them a call and say, hey, the board has chosen you, congratulations, or the chair can do that, whatever you guys would like, we'd like to have you prepare your draft contract and submit it to the board. At that same meeting, next Tuesday, when you do this, you make a decision, I would then like to meet with you in executive session and chat with you about what you're thinking in terms of benefits and pay, and I'll give you the benefit of, you know, what's normal for a community your size, and if you say, hey, Kev, what's going on in this area, deferred compensation, or Kev, what's going on on vacation, I'll tell you, so you'll know what these folks are probably going to be expecting. And then you set some parameters in terms of what you do and don't want to do, that's executive session, and that's contract negotiation.
Yes, yeah.
Perfectly legal. So you get all that work done, so the steps are, you meet next time, you talk, you pick your candidate, you make an extension of the offer to hire, the same meeting, you go in executive session, you talk about, you know, contract parameters, the chairman or I call the candidate, says, congratulations, send us your contract, in the four or five days that takes, we're checking references, verifying the resume, and then you come back, and hopefully by then you got a draft contract, and you review it, and I'm more than happy to sit and work. There's going to be some negotiation guaranteed, because I've never once, if it happens, great, but I've never once seen where candidates' expectations for what they want in that draft and what you want are going to match from the get-go. If it does, well, you know, you're probably off of the job with a candidate who's underselling themselves, so you want them to be a little aggressive and you want to be, you know, hey, this is what we can do, so there's going to be some negotiations. The last time I did this with you three years ago, the board asked me to negotiate on your behalf to get it to where either to accomplish the board's objective, i.e. you had set an executive session. And in the case of Brian, I wasn't able to do that, so I had to get it down as close as I could get it, and then I had to bring Brian to you, and then you had to have the face-to-face to iron up the last couple of points. Happy to do that for you if you want. The other alternative is the candidate sends you their draft and you meet with them. Now, you're entitled to, the part of that, that is when you're talking directly to the candidate, you're supposed to do that in public session. The part where you want to strategize amongst yourselves about how much you have the right to go back into executive session because you're continuing to discuss contract parameters, so it's kind of a tricky process.
Yeah, okay.
But I'll sit right here with you and make sure everything's buttoned up according to...
Question, why do we not generate a contract and say, here it is, this is what we're proposing?
You can do that as well, if you want to do that.
Yeah, we can.
If you want to do that.
That's what I'd want to do.
What you're saying is they may want to introduce, what Kevin's saying is because another, correct me if I'm wrong, Kev, what I'm hearing is, is because they've worked in other towns where they might offer different benefits, they're looking to get these, the problem that this, we, this board would have in doing so is, once you introduce that to one person's contract, it opens the door to all other department heads, and now they're going to want those same kind of benefits as well, so that's where this board would be fighting that trend.
Yeah, so...
We'll figure that out. I'd be more inclined to come up with our contract than have them...
So here's the reality you're dealing with today, there's a statute out there, chapter 1, Master of Watchup, 40N, Section 1.5, under which town managers negotiate contracts. Brian had one with you under that statute, because I've seen it and it says right in it, this contract, blah, blah, blah. Now, there is a lawyer that pro bonos to the Town Managers Association, and he gives them every year a draft...
Oh, I'd love to start, I'd love to start with a standard form boilerplate.
So that boilerplate covers all the issues.
That's fine.
Generally, the language of that boilerplate is understandable to everybody except for one section, the section that deals with chapter 158, the Public Indemnification Law, it's the same law that covers you and covers the candidate. And Kev, you may remember this, but it was the only real sticking point when we negotiated with Brian, because town managers and boards of selectmen are the only people under Masters of Public Law which have certain exemptions in that statute that protects everybody else and doesn't protect you. So town managers seek to button that up in the contract, and you're going to be careful...
We gave another contract, we gave another contract in town where that language was in, we modified it.
Yeah, so police chiefs, and I know you reached into the police chief, police chiefs are under a different section to that same statute, but there's only a few people that are under that statute, there's police chiefs, I don't think fire chiefs are in there yet, police chiefs, town managers, town accountants, CFOs are all in there, they have different sections, but they're all in there, other folks not so much. So it's a little bit of tricky waters, and of course, as Kev says, you know, the stress is you get other people, and even though under your form of government, you don't have what some towns have, which is a charter of bylaw that says... have what some towns have, which is a charter or bylaw that says, you know, these two people, it's typically the town manager, town administrator, and the superintendent of schools, do not get the same benefits and pay and all that as everybody else. Everybody else is over here, these two people are over there. You don't have that, so you've got a different dynamic to deal with, which is, you've got to be careful.
Yeah.
Because you've got other people that are going to come looking for those things.
Sure.
So that's a political decision that only you three gentlemen can decide on, but I'm very happy to help you get through it, because what you've got to balance is their expectation, the person you want to hire, with, with, you know, what's reality work. What you don't want to have happening, the only thing that I'm afraid of is you can't come to terms, and then your candidate walks on you, and I don't want to see that happen.
Well, let's, let's start with step one, step one, let's get together next Tuesday morning, let's, let's, let's all do whatever homework we feel is appropriate, put in now and then, let's gather, get together next Tuesday morning, let's come to an agreement on who we're going to make an offer to, and we'll, we'll take the next steps.
One of the things to think about for that part of the meeting, when you just, when you're going to decide who your candidate is, it kind of usually goes one of two ways, board members, somebody speaks first, and then there's a certain amount of deference that gets paid, so maybe you're thinking, this is your person, and Dave goes first, and you say, oh, well, maybe I'll defer to Dave.
No, that's not, that's not the way we work.
Okay, okay. Because I, I have a way to head that off. The next thing I was going to say is, usually, because you guys are strong-willed people who run for public office, usually, that's not a problem, no problem saying, okay, great, then with that being the case, you don't need to do anything except just.
And I've got, in my head, I've got two that would be acceptable, I could be, I could be swayed on, but. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
I. Thank you.